Madam Clerk, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome all to our Tuesday night, January 21st meeting. And it's a special evening tonight. We have our colleagues from the School Board here this evening in attendance. I'm going to start off with, it is New Jersey School Board Association Annual School Board Recognition Month, so my colleagues could be patient with me. We're going to start off in honoring our colleagues. Thank you, folks. If you could bear with me, I'm moving a little slow. I'm recovering from a shoulder surgery, and it hasn't been easy. I'm right-handed, and it's been quite the task. So, I wanted to start off with recognizing our two outgoing board members. This evening, we have with us, and I'll call you up in a minute, one by one, Mark Robertson and Sandra Mordecai for their years of service. So, I'd like to start off in honoring both of them. First, Mark. On a personal note, I met Mark, wow, many years ago. You've served for six years, and right when you first came on, right before, you were so enthusiastic, and you always presented so much energy, and you were just a great board member, a lot of fun to work with, so I'm glad to have you down this evening. Mark Robertson is a 14-year resident who resides in West Orange with his beautiful family, his wife Donna, and their two children. Both their son Jared and their daughter Joelle attend our West Orange Public Schools. Mr. Robertson studied at Yale University, earning a Bachelor of Arts degree in history. He is a marketing and strategic planning consultant for corporation nonprofit educational organizations. Mr. Robertson has proudly served on the West Orange Board of Education since 2014. He's held the office of Vice President three times. He had begun his first term with the objective to drive student achievement, strengthen administrative accountability for curriculum and finance, and to ensure that our district pursued best practices in education, delivering competitive education for all students. Mr. Robertson became New Jersey School Board Certified School Board Member in 2016. He has served on the West Orange Board of Education's Public Relations and Negotiation Committees. He was Legislative Committee Co-Chair and served on various district committees for math diversity, equity access, website and policy. He has advocated for the expansion of the district's coding and STEAM programs incorporating engineering principles for grades K through 8. He has been a staunch advocate for the district's English Language Arts Program focusing on greater attention to the diversity and rigor in book lists and increasing the frequency of reading books for fluency, along with greater focus on grammar, vocabulary building, and teaching root words. He has supported achieving one-to-one computer device to child ratio for grades 3 through 12, the guidance audit for K through 12 Guidance Department, and expanded athletic offerings at West Orange, supported expanding athletic offerings at West Orange High School, and many other instrumental district initiatives. Mr. Robertson has been very committed to the community by serving on the Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Edison Middle School, Liberty Middle School, and West Orange High School PTAs. He has been a scout leader for 10 years for PAC-12, serving as a chairperson and committee member for Troop 2. He was a mountaintop lead coach for eight years in house soccer and basketball, and a member of the West Orange African-American Organization. The West Orange Township Council would like to commemorate Mark Robertson's retirement and to express our sincere and profound appreciation for his years of faithful and dedicated service to our community. We want to further extend our heartfelt wishes for good health, success, and much happiness in the years to come. Mark, would you please come up? [applause] [inaudible]
I appreciate the Town Council for honoring us, and I want to thank you personally, too, because you helped to teach me a lot when I first came on the board, and that meant a lot to me. We actually first met out in front of Edison Middle School, and you were campaigning, I forget where, for which term, but we started talking at that point. I learned just so much from you from then on. You were an amazing board member to work with, and just a wonderful, wonderful team member, and I just want to thank you, and thank you all very much. Take care. [applause]
Next up, my friend Sandra Mordecai. I first met Sandra years ago with her kids on the PAL ball fields, and also another very passionate individual, always serving, and you could tell by her resume next that she's always out and about serving our community in such a great capacity. Sandra Marie Mordecai, formerly of Kingston, Jamaica, is a longtime resident of West Orange and has two wonderful sons, Nigel and Nicholas, who attended the West Orange Schools. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in management from Rutgers University, paralegal degree from Uppsala College, and associate's degree from Essex County College in Business Administration. Ms. Mordecai has proudly served on the West Orange Board of Education since April 2010. She has held the office of President in 2014 and '17. She had started her journey as an education advocate, serving on the PTA, Parents Advocating for Special Services in Education, known as PAS, New Jersey Statewide Parent Advocacy Network, and the Special Education Leadership Council, advocating for students with special needs, and for her son. Ms. Mordecai achieved certified board member status in 2013, master board member in 2015, and certified board leader in 2017, completing over 60 credits in the New Jersey Board Member Academy. She has been a member of the West Orange Board of Education's Diversity, Sustainability, Public Relations, Professional Development, and Small Learning Communities and Legislative Committees, and former board liaison to the West Orange Township Council. We served on that together. Sandra has also served on the Board's Negotiation and Policy Committees. Ms. Mordecai has served as both President and Vice President of the Essex County School Boards Association, and member of the County Association Leadership Equity Council. She has also been active with the Board of Directors of the New Jersey School Boards Association by serving on their nominating and strategic planning committees. Locally, she has served on the West Orange Human Relations and Public Relations Commission. She's a member of the West Orange African-American Organization, being recognized with the Women's History Month Award for outstanding service to the West Orange Public Schools. She has been a member of the League of Women Voters, Blue Wave New Jersey, and the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the Essex County Chapter of the Jamaican Organization, excuse me, Jamaica Organization New Jersey. She recently has become a member of the West Orange Rotary Club. The West Orange Township Council would like to commemorate Sandra's retirement and to express our sincere and profound appreciation for her years of faithful and dedicated service to our community. We want to further extend our heartfelt wishes for good health, success, and much happiness in the years to come. Sandra, if you could please come up. [applause]
I just want to, first of all, thank you, Michelle. I've known you, as you said, from PAL, going all the way back when our kids were second or third grade. It's so long. I want to thank you for your service on the Board of Ed as well, your dedicated service, as well as your service on the Council. Thank you to my colleagues, past, present, as well as my colleagues sitting here who also serve on the Board of Ed. Want to recognize you as well for your service. And just want to say thank you to the community for allowing me to serve for all these years, and look forward to seeing you around town. And I'm not done with school boards quite yet. They roped me back in for some committees, so I'm still on school boards. Thank you.
[applause] The reason why I want to bring everyone down here tonight, you know, as we know, our school board members are volunteered, 100% volunteered, as you could see by both Sandra and Mark's resumes. They just don't volunteer to be a school board member. It's many, multiple organizations and committees and time, and the time that you spend, I've had the honor to serve the community in both capacities, and I have to say, being a school board member, the hours really, really add up more than that we put into it at the Township Council, and as my colleagues can imagine, the hours we put in. So, we appreciate, and I'm so glad that New Jersey School Boards does this year after year, and our apologies, it got biased last year. Unfortunately, they don't really advertise it as much, and they really should, because recognition should be known to all of our volunteers. And this year, we have two new volunteers that have come up and are elective officials. Everyone not only has to volunteer, but they also have to, you know, get elected, which is not an easy task. That's even, maybe even harder than the job itself sometimes, and very, very stressful on one's family it could be. So, it's a lot of hours and a lot of commitment, and I'm going to ask for our school, our two new school board members, I'd like to call up and introduce. First, we have Jennifer Tunncliff and Gary Roth. And Gary, you made off New Jersey Transit. Congratulations. Would you like to come up? [applause] Hold on for this for now. I'm just going to ask you to, let's get this out. Sorry. Jennifer, we're going to call everybody all at once, Joe, and then we'll go take a picture right in front. So, just real quick, so Jennifer, she had just recently got elected, and again, multiple tasks, serving, re-instated the West Orange Women's Club, and many years Council PTAs, and very instrumental in our PTA organization. So, we thank you, Jennifer, for stepping up, and congratulations. And Gary, you as well. You have been instrumental PTA on committees and organizations and organizing our jitneys, so thank you very much from my colleagues. You know, you have really been instrumental for us, so we thank you. And again, for stepping up, this one's for you. I'm going to call up our Board Vice President, Cherry Trigg-Scales. She had gotten elected last year. And Cherry, I know you serve with Essex Rising and other committees, and a longtime administrator, and we appreciate you for all that you've done with your service, and our, thank you. [applause] And you survived your first year, so congratulations. You came back, it was great. Fortunately, we don't have Cheryl Merklinger with us this evening. She had a family commitment, and she was really disappointed. We were going to push it to our next meeting, first in February, but you have a cheerleading send-off for cheerleaders going to Florida. And last but not least, I'd like to call Ken Albert, and our current Board President, he's serving again. This is your fourth year on the school board this year?
Third.
Third, okay, all right. And again, multiple committees, he was instrumental for the Gregory School Elementary Committee for the driveway. And our Superintendent Schools is here in attendance as well, and we thank you, Dr. Cascon, for coming to support your school board members. And I'm going to read off our resolution. Did I give you yours? Yours? Okay. So, School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey, January 2020. New Jersey Public Schools serve approximately 1.4 million children from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And the direction of, whereas the direction of the public education in Jersey is charted locally by individual school boards, who over 4,800 members serve as advocates for public education as they work with administrators, teachers, parents, and local residents. And whereas Board of Educations provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the community, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectation for the school district. And whereas school board members receive no remuneration for their services, and the West Orange Township Council is just proud of the academic, athletic, and social achievements of the students in our community. And whereas New Jersey School Board Association has declared January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time that all residents might acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. Now, therefore be it, that the West Orange Township Council does hereby commend the service of the West Orange Board Education and for its members, your names are listed on your recognition, and that the West Orange Township Council proclaims January 2020 a School Board Recognition Month in West Orange, and urges all citizens in recognizing the dedication of local school board members, past and present, as we work together to improve educational opportunities for our children. Okay, thank you. [applause] Mr. Albert, would you like to speak to?
Sure. Real quick, I just want to thank Council President Castellino and the entire Council for this. You know, it's nice to have the recognition, you know, and it's nice that we're in a community where the school board and the Township Council have such a great working relationship, and we're able to work together and get so much done, because I know that's not really the case in a lot of places in New Jersey, so it's fantastic that we do have that. And, you know, beyond that, I think I can speak for everyone when I say that, you know, we're just all, you know, grateful for the recognition, and, you know, we're excited that we have this opportunity to serve the community, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Fagan if you could take a picture with our colleagues, with our Township Council, and Dr. Cascon, and Mark and Sandra, if you'd like to come on up and do a nice group picture. Yeah, let's go in the middle here.
Okay. Okay. Don't film.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a report from our Human Relations Commissioner, Ms. Tammy Williams. Oh, you have in your report?
No, we're not ready. We're not ready.
Oh, you're not ready yet? Okay, okay, so then, why don't we, are you doing it this evening still?
No, I'm close to it.
Absolutely, absolutely, not a problem. Okay. Then, next up, could we move forward to updates on redevelopment?
I'm going to, as I mentioned, to Councilman Kukoviac. Unfortunately, I don't have any updates. I believe Mr. Diaz is out of the country. I've tried to contact him Friday and today, and I was unable to contact him, so I really don't have any updates, other than the fact that I can tell you, we still don't have a contract for sale of the building, and as of the numbers I gave you guys last week, those are the only numbers I know that are rented as of this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sarris.
Sure.
Okay, next, we'll do our board liaison, or do you have questions?
Yes, please, I could just follow up.
Yes, Councilman, absolutely.
We've had discussions about the potential jitney service to the building, and some related sort of financial agreement related to that, and I'm just checking to see if there's been any progress since the last time we talked about it, which I think was maybe two months ago.
Not that I'm, yeah, not that I'm aware of. Mr. Lepore was working on that, as I said, and what we had said was, if it was only one or two people that we were going to do it, if it was a lot of people, then they would have to, you know, contribute to us, you know, putting a special bus there, and as far as I know, that hasn't happened. But I'll double-check with Mr. Lepore, and I'll let you know. But I'm pretty sure it hasn't happened.
So, we don't know how many people on a regular basis?
No, but it can't be a lot, because we wouldn't be going there if, in fact, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think there was a few in my last conversation with the person that works in leasing office, which was a couple of months ago. Okay, I'm going to start off with board liaison reports. I just want to start off first with, and then I'll turn over to Councilwoman McCartney. Last meeting, we had Mr. Piccolisi here from the county, and he won't be here this evening. There's actually a meeting for the county about Turtleback Zoo tonight. I believe it's in Cedar Grove, so many folks who might have came to our meeting, is probably at that meeting, getting some additional information. But in regards to the zoo and their plan for their new project, Mr. Piccolisi, just to recap, had come to our last council meeting. We had called and asked for information from the county executive, which he gladly provided. There was a planning board meeting, which Councilwoman will report on next, in regards to some recommendations that the planning board had made to the county, and they were more than willingly, the very next day or within 48 hours, we had received a letter back from the county executive to the planning board chair instituting many of the recommendations, if not all. And I believe they were very agreeable, and I just want to commend on how the process can work. And so, I appreciate you reporting back to us, Councilwoman, and if you could share the outcome of that meeting with the public, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. So, the county did a courtesy hearing to tell the planning board what it is that they wanted to do, their plan for the conservation pavilion that they were planning up there. We, as a council, had passed a resolution asking for, to see their master plan before the end of the year. They did submit that, so this is not the only project that they're working on. This is what they're doing at the time, at this time. It is a 500-seat auditorium type, an outdoor auditorium. They have, so the planning board made nine recommendations, that as Michelle mentioned, the counties sent us very timely, the next day, a letter saying that the recommendations provide an alternative view. They appreciated that. The board's recommendations, they took them seriously. They will incorporate into their projects. Originally, when they presented their application, there are 135 trees that have to come down. They were going to replace them, two to one, but they are now doing a four-to-one ratio, meaning 540 new trees will be planted in the reservation. We, as a planning board, are asking for cool roofs on any of their projects. They were a little bit hesitant at first, but from some of the other buildings that they have done previously, they, according to this letter, they agree they are going to include a white roof design in the project that came before us. One of the recommendations that I had suggested, they have a detention basin on here, and I wanted it to be a water feature, to serve as a rain garden, and my colleague on the planning board suggested that that become one of the educational features that they present in their conservation pavilion and their educational programming. What else? And it says that it would be part of the water management system, being designed to control runoff, 25-by-25-foot area that will be adjacent to the pavilion. Let's see. Residents that did come out for public comment were concerned about light and noise during construction, not only during construction, but during any of the educational programs, and that was something they took very seriously. Also, it says the intrusion of noise and light should not negatively impact residents' quality of life. Therefore, we are instructing our Essex County Health Officer to study the noise levels generated from the zoo, both during normal hours and during the construction times. In addition, we will review the plans with the lighting engineer to ensure lighting used at the conservation pavilion will not adversely impact areas beyond the zoo. The zoo, the planning board has been very concerned about traffic, as we heard here on council. The parking deck has been completed, so that's 500 cars. That has taken traffic off of Northfield Avenue. Says they're being a good neighbor, as evidenced by the addressing traffic along Northfield, addition of third onsite parking deck. Since its opening in December of 2019, surveys of Northfield Avenue indicated a reduction in traffic congestion even during peak times during their holiday light spectacular. They appreciated everything that we said, and are going to incorporate the recommendations that were made.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other reports for us? You could.
We did also approve the master plan, which is online, and recommendations were there also as well. Recommendations were made, and then amendments, and the amendments were made were really just to bring what we have been discussing the past year with all the stakeholders, our planner, discussing with stakeholders. So much of those conversations came to fruition, so our amendments really are just bringing that to date. The specific changes recommended for our master plan and redevelopment, or development, always looking at long-range development of land, ensure public safety is always foremost. Let's see, something specific. Appropriate development. Couple of the zones will be rezoned. Some of the specific things, we're going to modify permitted uses in commercial zones. For instance, there's limited medical uses. Now, we would include urgent care and physical therapy in some of health clubs as permitted. Permit microbreweries, distillery, and wineries in appropriate locations, which have become more commonplace and can be located in a range of settings. We're going to evaluate whether there are locations appropriate to permit medical marijuana production or sales in advance of potential future change in laws in the state. Permit drive-through windows as customarily accessory use for banks, fast food, and pharmacies. There were specific areas that we looked at, the stables on Woodland Avenue. Should, you know, it's a vibrant business there, but should anything, that was zoned as office research space, should that change its use? We're going to, we're recommending to rezone that to an R1, which would mean houses on one-acre lots. And there are other areas that, just to make it consistent, Cedar Avenue adjacent to May Apple Hill should also be an R1 zone. Residential parcel at Eagle Ridge Way, R1 zone, currently zoned as an office research. Main Street outside, just outside of our redevelopment zone should also be consistent with our redevelopment zone, and rezoning the Cambria Hotel from residential area to B2 for business. So, this will all come before the council for us to go over and make any more recommendations or approve.
Great. Thank you.
Do I have other announcements?
Yeah, real quick, if you have.
Okay, other announcements? Let me find my notes. I have a few invitations from the Arts Council. The Arts Council has an exhibition going on right now, if anyone follows Outlander, which I believe is on Netflix. One of the residents, Heidi Sussman, who was the former chair of the Arts Council, has an art exhibit using the characters and landscape of Scotland, where the setting is for Outlander, for the show itself. The paintings are beautiful. This will be next Saturday, January 25. Please visit westorangearts.org for more information. There will be a Scotch tasting event, as we enjoy the art. Another, let's see, another invitation, Chamber of Commerce, West Orange Chamber of Commerce will host, will sponsor the State of the Town Address, give a platform for the mayor to present his State of the Town Address. This will be on February 5, at 8 o'clock in the morning at the Wilshire Grand Hotel. Please visit westorangechamber.com for ticket information and sponsorship information. We are recruiting new members. We are recruiting new members for the Thomas Edison, Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. If anybody would like to share their ideas on how we can preserve and conserve our National Historic Park, right here on our main street, please reach out. And we just submitted a grant to plant trees along Main Street, along the corridor, to minimize the effect of heat islands created by just open parking lot. West Orange Environmental Commission will meet next Wednesday. I'm sorry, I don't have the date. We continue to work with the Board of Education. We are currently working with the Board of Education on sustainable projects with the Sustainable Technology Students and the science instructors there. And after this planning board meeting, the chair of the West Orange Environmental Commission, who came here to speak and spoke at the planning board, and the chairman of the South Mountain Conservancy continued to meet with the county on the zoo. So, they are presenting additional recommendations to them, and again, the report back is that the county is very receptive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mathieu Brown. And before you start, I have to congratulate you. You were honored yesterday at a human relations.
Oh, thank you.
Martin Luther King Day celebration. My apologies that I could not be there yesterday, I was having a bad morning, so.
Jerry did a wonderful job.
And thank you for filling in councilman for me.
And just, just if I can, Tammy Williams, the chair of the HRC, that was a wonderful event. I continue to hear from everyone just how, how entertained everyone was with yesterday's event. It was really, really a nice event to attend and also to be honored in, so thank you. And I didn't know, but Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill also made a surprise appearance and had proclamation, so that was an added, an added treat for us as well. Okay. With respect to the municipal alliance, they had a meeting last week. Unfortunately, it took place at four o'clock. I'm not available at four o'clock, so I'm waiting for a follow-up to that meeting. So, then I'll report out on that during the next council meeting. With respect to the OSIPAC, we're able to meet last week, and I believe Mr. Sayers and Karen, our municipal clerk, sent out the financials to everyone. I saw the email that was circulated. So, at the meeting, the things that, that were discussed were specifically about the existing ordinance, which is twenty-three point four. And that talks to, it's actually the ordinance that regulates the parks and recreational facilities. That also addresses the fees, rental fees for the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. There is twenty-three dash four point two, I'm sorry, twenty-three dash four point three, talks about the exemptions. Item B under that talks about specifically theater under the stars. Obviously, that has to be amended. So, what they decided to do is, once they go through all of this and put together any changes that the ordinance, this particular one, would have to have, and I think that's the only one they discussed. I know insurance was discussed. I don't know, with respect to the liability, I know that the PVP, Pleasant Valley Productions, does pay for insurance for the facility, but there's also additional insurance required for anyone else who, who will rent it. That was distracting. So, that was with respect to that ordinance. With respect to the most recent ordinance that we passed to create the board, what they are working on with respect to member duties is their bylaws. And they will also be assigning amongst them officers for their, for their meetings and operations. So, it was like every man down last week, with Shari unfortunately at her physical therapy, sharing your similar pain. Unfortunately, Shari had an accident and her arm.
Cast.
Yes. She broke her, actually, I think her, right below her shoulder, yeah, was fractured. So, she's, she couldn't make it out, she was trying to. And I think, and I'm forgetting his name right now, from, from.
Bill Keogh?
No, Bill was there. And what a wealth of information. I think that honestly, as a liaison, knowing nothing about all of this stuff, listening to the conversations, he was a wealth of information there. But from parks and.
Louie Reynolds.
Louie, thank you. Louie Reynolds is also down and out sick. So, looking to schedule something as soon as they're back on their feet. In the meantime, all of the ordinances were submitted to them, for them to review. They're gonna look at creating their bylaws, selection of officers for the next time they meet. Oh, and they were also talking about the actual financials for review, because there is two dash five nine point four under member duties. Item C talks about the review on two occasions, which is first, no later than July first of each year, and then second, no later than October first of each year. This didn't seem to make sense for them. They questioned why it was set like this, but I think we just pulled this off of another ordinance and entered it there. However, they feel that prior to programming, in April sometime, and then at the end, would make sense, when they close their books, because in, in the meantime, they just wouldn't have anything to go on. So, that's a discussion that was had. Still, nothing finalized, but that's where we left off. Yeah, the selection of the officers, the bylaws, and the financials are what they're going to be looking at. And obviously, they're discussing programming, nothing is set in stone yet. Bill Keogh does have all of the recreation department's programs already scheduled. I think only one is scheduled at OSIPAC, I'm not sure. And I didn't bring the flyer with me, unfortunately. It's not finalized either, so I will share that once it is. And so, they'll be discussing what type of programming, when, and we'll report back.
And excuse me, Councilwoman, or is she gonna come in?
She will.
Next meeting or the meeting after?
I believe next meeting, February fifth. Is that our next meeting?
Okay.
Yes, and she'll do a presentation, answer any questions with respect to. Answer any questions with respect to, you know, the financials that anyone may have.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Garino.
Thank you, Council President, thank you. Again, congratulations to Councilwoman Mathieu Brown.
Thank you.
It was, it was an honor sharing the stage with you yesterday, and thanks for Tammy for singing out that great happy birthday. So, I appreciate that, Tammy, thank you. That was very thoughtful. Going up tomorrow night, I know it's late, but tomorrow night is our monthly meeting of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, up at Turtleback Zoo at the ECEC, seven thirty. You should come out and, and take the effort to come out and talk to our professionals, plus my board members who are traffic engineers, safety engineers, planners, experts in traffic safety. We talk a lot about the things that you have questions on, particularly about bikeways and pedestrian mobility, and that's what we're working on. A major project we are working on are two grants for mobility and safe routes to school. And the other thing is that we're planning in, in March to have another townwide meeting on our master plan, our complete streets, with Professor Charles Brown from Murchison University, the Blaustein School of Public Development. So, we hope you come to our meetings. You can ask questions, that's why we're there. People come and they'll ask our experts, people like Mike Damon Miller, Laurie Caffener, and ask them about safe routes to school, traffic safety, bike lanes. And so, you'd understand why we can't have bike lanes throughout most of the streets in the township of West Orange, because they're not wide enough. They don't meet the federal mandate or the state mandate for width of a, of a, of right of way to have bike lanes. But there are other alternatives that we are working on. If you have an issue, come to our meeting, talk to our board, send me an email to Jerry at my township email. Send me an email with questions and we'll answer them for you. That's why this board was put together. We have a great turnout many evenings when we have our meeting, and people actually pick up a lot of what's going on, and they understand the things we've done. The traffic light at Alyssa Drive, the new stoplights, the flashing LED stop signs, the new mid-block crosswalk that we're working on. The, hopefully, the, the introduction of our Main Street Road Diet to correct the issues on Main Street, which will come to the council, approve, go back to the Downtown Alliance, and then go out to the merchants and the residents along the Main Street corridor so we get your input. It's not something we're gonna say you're gonna do it, we want your input. So, those are the things that we're working on, and we'd love to see you at our meetings. Our, our board members like to be questioned, they like to show you what they can do, and you can come and ask, specific or just questions off the wall, things about school safety, things about walkability through the township, things about our sidewalk program. So, we'd like to see you. It's tomorrow night, seven thirty, and it's every, it's every third Wednesday, second Wednesday of the month, it's on the township calendar, seven thirty at Turtleback Zoo at the ECEC, and we thank the county for the use of the facility. Moving right along is our Downtown Alliance, and we just had our monthly meeting, and we, you should come out to our meetings, they're open to the public. You can learn about all the fantastic things that we're planning throughout the township, particularly Thursdays on Main Street during the summer. You know, we're up covering street fair in June, it's celebrated along with Edison Day. So, it's a big turnout, we get a lot of people, so you should come and, and ask questions. Meet the, the owners of our businesses, meet the other members of our board who are working on design, development, issues of attraction, economic development. So, you should come, instead of like going on Facebook and complaining, come on down to the meeting. Come ask the questions, and the people who are the experts are there, and they can answer your question. We have a new business opening for a grand opening ribbon cutting on this Saturday at twelve noon at two fifty-three Main Street and Tory Corner. It's Whole Mother's Village. They're celebrating a year in the township, and they're celebrating the opening of their new location in Tory Corner. So, you know, they'd love to meet you. Come on out and see what they do and how they help our community, and they'd love to go over everything they do, show you their products and services. So, come on down and see the others. See all the new bakeries, the new, you know, the new restaurants, you know. Patronize our Main Street merchants, they'd love it. They, they really are making the effort to redevelop our downtown, and then when you're at it, go visit the Edison site. It's a great thing. There are a lot of people in West Orange who have never been to the Thomas Edison Museum, the national park. So, I'm sure Tom Ross, Superintendent Ross, would love to welcome you there, and have a good day with your family, and then go eat or shop. Another thing with the Downtown Alliance is, is a program that we're developing, and thank you Joe Fagan too for really spearheading this, is our hometown heroes. And what we're trying to do is, along Main Street and on the poles, is to, and Joe, you have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll leave the rest of that to Joe Fagan, but it's a great way to honor the heroes of West Orange. Families can patronize it, and I'll leave it to our town historian, Joe Fagan, to, to go forward with that. I don't know if I can mention, is that February twenty-third is the Unico Sports Breakfast at the Tornoff Cafeteria at the high school. This year is a special year, it will be the fiftieth anniversary of the death, sorry, passing of Brian Piccolo. And this is a really effort for you to come out and, and share the stories and everything else. Talk with your neighbors and friends and honor our sports heroes throughout the township of West Orange. Support the West Orange Orange Unico Organization. It's a great breakfast, it's ten dollars, you can go online and look. Great way to spend a Sunday morning. It's really a lot of fun, you can watch me and Councilwoman Castellano going around carrying coffee and pancakes and things like that, so I hope your shoulders better.
Gonna be tough, gonna be tough, working the raffles.
So, also, so we look forward to that. And I'm sorry if I didn't hear, but we do have the taste of the town. Councilwoman McCartney, would you like to talk about that? Because basically, since that is Rotary and it's, you know, the.
I'm on chamber, it's not Rotary.
Yeah, you want to say anything about it?
Just a date, real quick.
Just a date, yeah. I don't have the date, I don't have that information.
Well, it's fifty dollars. I know Megan Brilla's selling tickets, it's, it's a great event at Mayfair Farms, goes from six to eight-thirty, sponsored by West Orange.
February twenty-fourth, sorry, February twenty-fourth, six o'clock at Mayfair Farms.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, other than that, that's all I have to say, but please come out to our meetings, the Downtown Alliance, the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Again, kudos to Tammy Williams and to Councilwoman Mathieu Brown. Choose to show you how our town is. This is what makes West Orange such a great place. It's the great people that celebrate, the different things that make up our community, the different organizations and the people and the spirit. So, I really encourage you, don't, don't complain every day. Don't go on Facebook and say, why is this, why is that? Come out and talk to us, that's why we're here. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Thank you, Councilman, for your passion. Councilman Kogrovia.
Thank you, Council President. Just to follow up on Councilwoman McCartney's discussion about the master plan update, the Open Space and Recreation Committee also has completed its update of its master plan. It's now online. If you go to westorange.org and just search for Open Space, it should be the second, the plan itself should be the second item that you can pick up. Just briefly, the goals under the plan, gonna go through them quickly. Preserve open space, no surprise there. Acquire land which mitigates or eliminates flood hazards and prevents erosion. Preserve open space. Expand opportunities for parkland to become community gathering places. Develop pocket parks. Establish greenways connecting parkland in the township. Identify and protect at-risk natural resources, such as stream corridors, core forests, wetlands, steep slopes, and water features from disturbance and future development. Identify and work to preserve and create habitat for threatened and endangered species. This is a new item that was not in the previous plan, among other entries here, but I thought it was pretty significant, which is to develop a stream corridor program to bring attention to and respect and protection for rivers and streams in the township. Preserve view sheds within the township and preserve historically significant sites. You may or may not know that all property owners in town pay an open space tax every year. Since the tax was instituted by popular vote back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand and eleven, we have contributed a little over two and a half million dollars in, to the Open Space and Recreation Trust Fund, and we've spent one point six four million. The current balance at the end of two thousand eighteen was nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's, it's probably more now. Mr. Gross, you wouldn't know. So, it's been, thank you, it's been added, our, our plan is, has been added to the master plan, and eventually, it will come to the council, as Councilwoman McCartney said, and we, we as a council can make pretty much any changes that are legal that we want to make. So, if anybody wants to review the, the town master plan and the, the open space plan between now and, I don't know, when would it be coming here, Councilwoman?
I don't know.
Because this, the next stop would be us, right? That's the next stop?
The next stop, yeah, yeah. It was approved? Yes, this was approved, the open space plan was approved?
Right.
It will be incorporated in the master plan?
So, if, so if anybody wants to go look at the open space plan and make recommendations to the council, or come to the, keep an eye out for when it comes before the council, and you can contribute there too. The Open Space and Recreation Committee met last week. I'm sorry, let me just find my notes here. The, the, I guess the, the big news was that the township had discovered some illegal dumping up at The Rock at five seventy-seven Mount Pleasant Avenue, and as a consequence, we've installed a gate, a pretty substantial, sturdy gate at the entranceway to try to prevent that. There'll be, we're planning to have a celebration of Earth Day, which is, this year is Wednesday, April twenty-second. We have a March fourth meeting, if anybody'd like to come to discuss that. We also talked about the county open space, I guess, grant application for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to each of the municipalities in the county, through the county open space fund. And we were, I'm, I'm not sure how to characterize the entire group's feeling, but the issue was settled that the chairman of the Open Space Committee was gonna talk to the administration to see if we, meaning the Open Space Committee, could get a slice of the open space grant, the hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, to do some, do some improvements up at The Rock that I've talked about here at the meetings before that we've, we've had. at the meetings before that we've, we've had through the concept, the conceptual plan that we had done a couple of years ago. And I'm not sure what happened with that, but when we come to the, there's a resolution on the agenda for tonight, we can, we'll, we'll discuss it. So, the next open space meeting is March 4th, so if anybody would like to come. And the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow, so I have no news on them.
Okay.
And just wanted to ask a question in, just wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Matute Brown's discussion of OSPAC. And we can just save it if you want to...
We can save pending matters, how do we do that? Great, thank you Councilman, I appreciate that. Because we're right, yeah, we're, we're running over. So, I just wanna, there was one announcement, the West Orange Classic Film Festival is, is in full gear and each week there's been great, pre, uh...
Sold out?
Sold out, it's been sold out each week. I'm just looking at the date. To Kill a Mockingbird is this week, Sunday, January 26th at 2:00 PM up at the movie theater up in Essex Green, so please come out. Duck Soup will be Sunday, February 2nd. So, thank you Councilwoman. Just real quick, I just want to thank Laura Van Dyke from our Senior Services Department, Dorothy Sanders, Susan Avino. They have applied, worked really hard and diligent with our grant writer for $75,000 grant for the Grotta Fund Program for additional programming for Senior Livability, Senior Livabilities Initiative. So, we're just expanding our programming, which has been great. We're looking to expand services up at the Toby Cat Civic Center. And I'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the grant as well for Degnan Park, because it all kinda ties in together. And I'll just share some thought processes from Mr. Keough when we get to that section of the meeting. But very exciting, hopefully, keep our fingers crossed. We have a lot of intergenerational programming scheduled, because West Orange High School's right there, only makes sense for the, the students to walk down and, and to continue programming there with our seniors, they've been great. And so, we're, we're looking really forward to expanding. And just so you know, also Dorothy Sanders worked really hard to get a calendar online. We just have to fix a few glitches with as far as like clicks, I should say, for the website, because I always like the senior livability's programming to be, you know, first click and I'll have to go three clicks to get the calendar. But we have all the calendar events, all the great programming that the Public Library has been really hosting for us over at, at their facility. So, it's been really great, so many great programmings, so many great programs this year. So, we have it online on a calendar that you can look it up. And last week we had the Public Relations Commission met. I want to thank Shaw McCauley, he was our guest speaker for us. He came in, is helping us along with Sarah's Orange, Stacy Reese, and Megan Brill with West, bringing Restaurant Week back to West Orange. We're gonna push it back to the last week of April, beginning of May. And we look forward to great participation, lot of great new restaurants open up in town, it's gonna be a townwide event, and we look forward to promoting that. So, with all that said, Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7th, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Okay, so first order of business this evening is we need to go back to our meeting that we recessed from December 18th, 2019, so I will need a motion to go back to that session. We have to some, finish business for the end of 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Okay. So, Mr. Gross, I think I'd like to start off with these items. If you, if you just explain to the public the reason for this and then we'll, I'll see if any of my colleagues have questions for you.
There are, there are, ends up that there was only, only requirement of two resolutions this evening, one for transfers and one for cancellations for the 2019 year. The, the transfers are basically allow us, if one, one account runs short, to transfer from another account who has, which has money in it. We're not, we're not allowed to do that until after November, to the end of the year. And we like to do it at this point in time, because it allows us to actually close out our books. And so, we have high confidence that there's nothing else in, in the works. Same thing with cancellations. Cancellations frees up funds for use in the following tax year, as well as just basically cleaning up accounts that perhaps are, are either no, no longer active or not, no, no long, well, no longer active.
And do any of my colleagues, Councilman Kukoviac, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to just ask a few questions in the Resolution 318-19. And this is all online, if anybody wants to go back and look at it. I just have a couple of questions, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into the microphone, apologize. Just a couple of questions about some of the bigger items on the list of cancellations. The, the biggest one is, I guess, the, what appears to be the cancellation of existing balances on capital organ, ordinances where we have issued bonds to fund projects. And it looks like this is left over, do I understand that?
Yeah, these, these are, these are over 10 years old. We, we like to call it back. We, we don't like it hanging out there too, too long. Plus, we, there are some exceptions where we have ongoing projects for, for whatever reasons, then, then, then we would leave it open. But generally speaking, we, we like to cancel, those funds are canceled, they go to surplus and they're utilized in the, in the year following or years following to pay down the debt service.
Right, that's exactly what I was gonna ask about, because it looks like it's roughly about $800,000. So, that's a nice chunk of money to have.
Some of it is offset by, it's about $500,000 when it nets out, because some of, some of it is offset by outstanding, their grants, they were funded through a grant, the project is done, we didn't need all of the money that was in the grant, and therefore both sides get canceled out, so that, that offsets. So, it's really about a half a million dollars.
Just, just a question, I, I know our, our debt is going up and I know I talk about it a, a lot, but I'm just wondering, as you mentioned payoff debt service on this, is, are you thinking about using it to actually pay off some bonds?
We do, we do every year.
Okay.
We anticipate money in the budget every year from capital, from, from capital surplus. This will cover us, certainly for this year and maybe for a couple more years.
Okay, right.
Depends on, depends on what activity we have. The, we, we used to fund some of our payments for, for the budget, or ha, still do, through premiums that we get from the sale of bonds or bond anticipation notes. But frankly, that is beginning to dwindle. Things are getting tighter and tighter in that market as well. So, this certainly will make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover our anticipated revenues that we need to pay.
Okay. I'm, I'm a big fan of paying off the, the bonds themselves as opposed to the debt service. Do you have any plans at this point where you would put the money? If you've got $500,000, can we, can we pay off any of the ones?
Well, our bond, you know, bonds are bonds are bonds, and the payments are the payments are the payments. So, you don't, you can't, you can't pay them off early, or most of them you cannot pay, pay off early. And if you, in order to pay them off early, you have to refinance the whole thing, you can't just, it's not like you can put extra money down and, and collect it. So, at this point in time, we'll be using this for our, for our routine payments of debt service, which means that's less that we have to go to the taxpayer for.
Right.
So, there is some benefit to the taxpayer for that.
But it's not really enough to do a pre refund or anything like that?
No.
Okay, okay. Just a couple of other items on here, there was a, a cancellation of 280, almost a little over $284,000. It looks like it's from that massive Mayfair area sewer project. Did we really have $284,000 left over?
Yes.
Wow. That was about a, what, two and a half million dollar project?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, that's...
In the grant, not, we didn't have anything left over in our, of the funds that we put up into it. But at the end of the day, you know, they, for instance, the project, we anticipate a certain cost, police directors, police direction people, they're not covered by the grant. So, those funds ends up, end up hanging out there, even though it was given to us, we have to give it back.
Okay, so that's what that, that 284, we don't, that's not, okay. And then the last item was for almost $570,000, and all it says is capital fund balance. And I'm not sure what that...
Yeah, that's the offset I was telling about, that, 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 the amount that actually goes, fund balance is our surplus. So, that's not, that's not a cancellation, that's where that money goes. This particular format not only shows you what's being canceled, but it shows you how we're using the money.
Okay. And then the last item I wanted to ask about was down at the bottom where it talked about Green Acres cancellation?
Yes.
About 143,000 and change?
Yes.
Was, is anything in particular going on there? We actually got Green Acres funding that we didn't spend?
This is, this is the, the council, we proposed, the council adopted a resolution not too long ago, canceling out all of our Green Acres programs.
Because of Rock Spring?
This is an offshoot of this, I mean, it's, to some extent this is redundant, but it's a, it's a good place to do it and show.
Okay. And that's part of, because we acquired Rock, Rock Spring and we're, we're looking to focus on that for any Green Acres?
Correct.
Future grants, okay. Thank you, that's all I had, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, Mr. Gross, is there, and, the rates are, you know, they have dropped this, at the end of the, the year. Are you moving forward all refinancing anything this year? You can need to drop a little bit lower?
Well, we're gonna be financing, we're not gonna be refinancing, but we're gonna be financing, we're gonna, you know, at this point in time, I'm looking, we, I guess the first seven or eight years that I was here, we didn't do any long notes or, or long notes or, or bonds. And now we're doing one every year, because this is, these are historically low rates and we're gonna take advantage for the taxpayer.
Okay. So, I guess we'll get into more detailed budget season?
Yeah, I mean, that's, those are, kinda happens behind the scenes in terms of, of us going out to bond. I mean, those, they're already been authorized, everything, it's a matter of timing. So, when the time, when time looks right and all the professionals feel that we'll move forward with it, and it's not something that would come before council.
Okay, thank you. My colleagues, Councilwoman?
Do you have a question about the Green Acres? I wanted to know the back history on that, and I remembered the resolution on Lafayette, so that was my question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I do, thank you. Just a couple of questions with respect to the, on the same resolution, 318-19, with respect to Capital Ordinance 112292, it's $109,000, right, in 315. When this ordinance was passed for the various capital improvements, it was passed for $90,000. I just wanted to know, how does it increase?
I'm sorry?
When the ordinance was passed, it was passed for $90,000. Or at least that's what was on the, on the bond notes at, in 2015, I wanna say.
That, you'd have to show it to me, the bond, we would never do a bond ordinance for just $110,000, $90,000.
Okay. I thought that it was probably...
It's in combination, it's in combination with something else, so...
I thought that, that's what it looked like.
Yeah, I mean, there are different lines in, in ordinances, depending on what we're, we're talking about, you know, and, and we did, we did a reallocation ordinance back about five or six years ago, which we may or may not have reallocated the entire thing depending on the circumstance. I'd have to look at the document.
Okay.
I could tell you that, that, a lot more was, was bonded.
Was bonded for.
I mean, I could look it up and get you...
And then I just had another question with respect to the capital ordinance, it's actually the two following, it's 1374-96. It says that they were for COA obligations, what, what does that mean?
We, we put together a, a bond ordinance some time ago to pay for some of our obligations for COA. We now have sufficient funding in our trust funds that we've gotten from developers and contractors, so I don't feel that it's necessary for us to continue to reserve that. Number one, it's over 10 years old, probably shouldn't, there's not, it's not, not live and ongoing, there's no real good justification for keeping the money in there, in my opinion, so...
So, is that, is that just so that I can understand, when a municipality or township has COA obligations, they're, they fiscally are responsible for those obligations if developers are not paying for them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the municipality is responsible for 100%. The, the legislature's given us tools to allow us to raise monies in certain ways, but at the end of the day, if we have an obligation, it's our obligation and nobody else's.
So, when we're not meeting those affordable housing obligations, then the municipality is paying for it?
Municipities, municipalities that have ignored, not, West Orange is not in that category. West Orange has, has been very active in trying to meet its obligations.
Including residents.
There are towns in the state that are not so diligent about that, and yes, they have had to come up with money and solutions on their own.
So, I just want to, just for the general public's sake, if, if you are looking at Resolution 31819 in respect to the ordinance that we just talked about, with respect to the COA obligations, that ordinance was passed is for the amount of $1,325,250. That's a learning experience for me, because I didn't know that we phys, I knew we had an obligation to fulfill those, but I didn't realize that it was a, a monetary obligation for us to fulfill as well. So, thank you for clarifying that. That's all the questions I had on this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Guarino, any questions?
No, I went through the whole, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Gross answered my questions.
Okay, great, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 318-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman, Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay. And 319-19, Resolution authorizing transfers between 2019 budget appropriations, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to ask questions. That's like a grand, that's like a tradition every year, I ask about these, and I, I didn't ask about it...
Overtime, overtime, overtime.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. So, before we vote, I just wanted to say...
That's okay, I don't want you to break tradition, go right ahead.
Okay. It's not gonna change my vote, but it just might give people a little bit better idea about what happened in 2019. The first time I wanted to ask about was a little bit more than $80,000 that was moved into the litigation, O and E. I'm just wondering whether there are any particular items of litigation that cost, cost us, because I think we, $150,000 is the budget?
Yeah.
So, this is like 50% over?
Quite a bit with COA, the, you know, our housing Highlands, the Highlands litigation.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work that's been going on this year.
Oh, I know. Councilwoman and I have been in a lot of meetings, but we didn't get any of that money. Is there any way for us to get it?
I understand that, yeah.
No? Okay. But that, you would say that's significant?
If I had to pick one, that would be, I mean, I'd say there are a couple of other, but that, that one stands out.
Okay. And then you had a planned surplus, overage of about 153,000 on central insurance. I can't remember whether you've discussed this before, the 153, but how did that happen that you were able to, to budget that surplus?
Well, we, we discuss all the time that there's certain, there's surplus within the budget, places where historically we do not spend the entire amount, you kind of call that a planned surplus. We never know where the planned surplus is gonna occur and where it's not, I mean, where we're gonna be right and where we're gonna be wrong. So, any, any area where, within the budget where we just haven't spent it out, we're kind of terminating that, just so you have an idea of what it is, it's that planned surplus.
Okay. So, it wasn't, it wasn't that we had a better experience in one of the lines of insurance that created 153,000?
I don't know if better is the right, but that we had, we had a favorable experience in this particular line. We could have gone, we could have just easily talked about going the other way, this is health benefits. the other way. This is health benefits line, and so-
So this was-
It couldn't have easily gone, you know, another, you know, another bad claim, set of claims with somebody getting, you know, unfortunately very ill, could have taken us in the other direction.
Okay, so that's where it was from, is claims. Okay. A little bit farther down, you've got an extra almost three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for, looks like overtime for the fire department speaking.
Speaking.
I did not time that.
How appropriate, that.
Right, but it's-
I mean, we, we, we kind of dance with, with that, with, with fire and police to that extent, and, and to try to minimize the impact on the taxpayer. We, we count on a certain amount of slippage to help us offset. This particular year, we had none out of, out of that department. So that, that's where that gets, that's why that hits us.
I can't remember exactly what the number is that we budget for overtime. Is it nine hundred thousand dollars for the-
No, the fire, I think it's six fifty.
Six fifty. So this, this was another fifty percent-
Yeah.
-from the budget?
It's not unusual. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not unusual for us to spend a million dollars there. Again, usually we have three or four hundred thousand dollars in slippage to offset it. So when that happens, I don't wanna say you don't see it, but it doesn't, doesn't pop up in your face, so.
Do you have, do you have any crystal ball about what you think the experience might be this year in two thousand and twenty?
I believe we're, we're looking at some retirements, so.
Okay. And then there's about a quarter of a million dollars in public works.
It's overtime as well.
Overtime.
And that's, that's strictly driven with weather and-
Yeah. Snowstorms.
Okay. And then the next, the very next line is three hundred and ten thousand dollars for street salt. Those two go in hand in hand. Okay. There were several, there were several items related to garbage and trash collection.
Yeah, we had a real good year with, we actually worked with, with the contractor to identify. We came up with a real good set of, of numbers in terms of how many units we have out there. So we've, we saved a little bit of money there. And our residents are doing better with, with recycling than when, so we, we had a little bit of money left over, and we were able to use that to offset some of these transfers.
Okay.
Okay.
Fuel was, I guess, planned surplus. There was a twenty-four thousand dollar move to the jitney bus program.
We had an increase in the contract this year.
That's what it was covered in that experience. Okay. The pool, this last question, the pool had a, an overage on salary and wages of a little over twenty-nine thousand dollars?
It did. It did.
See, my memory is that it rained a lot over the summer, but-
But our revenues were way up. So it must have been, you know, whatever happened, I mean, you know, in terms of the day to day, when it was raining, there was an awful lot of time when people came, 'cause our revenues were up too. So I suspect because our revenue's up somewhere along the line, that, that, that certainly would drive-
More salary and wage?
Salary and wage, sure.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had.
The more people are there-
Yeah.
The more people you need.
I think they had a few, a few events too, that were pool related. And just going back to your point on the recycling and the, and the, with the, with the garbage contract, I know I was speaking with Mr. Solis and your work, Councilwoman, you know, recycle coach, and just educating, is doing a great job educating folks. And the tonnage, when tonnage decreases, that, that's more revenue for us, so.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt three nineteen dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Administration's gonna withdraw the last resolution.
Right.
Not necessary.
Okay.
So is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and enter into our January twenty-first meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Okay. Start all over. Okay, yeah, start all over. Okay, so we're gonna go to public comment. Okay. So at this point of the evening, we're gonna go into public comment. You will have, if you'd like to address the council, you have five minutes at the podium to address the council. The clock is here, and we will address all of you after everyone has spoken. Because conference agenda had ran really late this evening, and I thank the public for being patient for that, it was important to recognize our, our colleagues over the school board. I know Mr. Fagan will speak first at public comment. He has a quick, he said two point, two and a half minute presentation, so we'll hold that to you.
Karen, can you just turn those lights off, please? The Downtown West Orange Alliance would like to take this opportunity to announce a new and exciting program for the downtown corridor. West Orange has become New Jersey's most decorated community with approximately three hundred and thirty West Orange veterans receiving the New Jersey Distinguished Service Medal since nineteen ninety-nine. The downtown alliance's Hometown Hero program is intended to honor them along with all West Orange veterans, past and present, along the downtown corridor with, with banners bearing their photo. So without further hesitation, let's take a closer look at the program. This brochure fully explains the program and contains a form inside to fill out to sign up. We are appealing to families of former veterans or current veterans from West Orange to participate. The purpose of this program is to install new banners along the downtown corridor from utility poles remembering West Orange veterans. This is a style of the banner that will be used. It will contain a photo of the veteran, preferably in uniform, that will be submitted by participating families. It will also display the branch's service and the era in which they served. At the bottom of the, at the bottom, the name of the family sponsoring the banner will be displayed. Our hope is that with the presence of these banners, those traveling throughout the downtown corridor will enjoy a visual experience that pays tribute to our West Orange veterans. Let's take a look inside the banner, inside the brochure, which further explains the program in greater detail and how a sponsor can participate. The left, the left side provides answers to three key questions. Each banner will be in the same style with, with only the photo and the veteran's information changing. As I mentioned, the banners will be installed on existing utility poles and visible on both sides. You do not have to live in West Orange to purchase a banner. Any family member of a veteran can do so. However, the program is only open to former or current West Orange residents who have served or are in active duty. The banner is thirty by sixty inches in size and will be displayed for approximately one year. The banner will then be returned to the family or person who purchased it. The cost of the banner is two hundred dollars. Financial consideration will be given to veterans' families who cannot afford the banner. We will help subsidize the cost of the banners through donations to those who cannot afford one. Anyone wishing to make a tax-free, a, a tax-free deduction specifically earmarked for this purpose is urged to contact us. Please contact us with more information about financial assistance, and all requests will be kept confidential. The only requirement, as previously stated, is the veteran must be a former or current West Orange resident. The chart here offers, offers the- I'm sorry, I lost my paper here. This chart below explains the, the dates of service, and it basically is all-inclusive from World War I to, to the, to the present day. The other side of the form is for filling out. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is completed and it is mailed back to the Downtown West Orange Alliance. Of course, there's a release form on here for use of the photo, and family members must provide This is the back of the, of the program, of, of the brochure. And again, you can see a closer example of the banner that is gonna be used. They're all gonna be in the same style. The only difference is gonna be the photo, the name, and obviously the information will change. In certain cases, it, it might not necessarily be sponsored by one family, especially if it's a grandfather or, that may have several descendants, different families. So there's room enough on the bottom for several families that want, that may want to sponsor a banner. So this concludes the presentation on the banners, on the hometown heroes. I have brochures up here. If anyone's interested, I urge you to take them, and I urge, urge your participation. At this time, I will, I will entertain any-
Awesome, thank you. Hi, guys. I, you know, we're real excited about this whole program. Megan Brill, Executive Director, Downtown Alliance. We, so we put together the brochure, actually Joe did, did a great job with it. We're gonna add John McGuire to the, the brochure. He will be the, the guy that is on there. And I got a picture from Annie today, and we knew that absolutely that John McGuire would, would want his banner up on Main Street. And what I didn't know was that Annie's uncle, Jimmy, was lost in Korea-
Very nice.
-MIA. And they're gonna wanna put that banner up as well. So I, it's gonna be really hard to hear all these stories all year long, and, you know, I think that, I kind of can't wait. I think we're gonna have, you know, maybe two downtown banners, and all the rest are just gonna be hero banners. So we're really looking forward to the program. We hope that everybody participates. And if you have any questions about it, please just let us know. But I wanted to share that story with you, 'cause I didn't know about Uncle Jimmy.
Very nice. Thank, thank you, Ms. Brill. And Mr. Fagan, thank you.
I have, I have something to add as public information officer.
Okay, great.
If I may take just a brief second to do that. As Councilman Krokovia mentioned, there is a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commi-, Commission tomorrow here, beginning at seven, seven o'clock. And eastern architects in New York City will be doing a presentation on a site survey of historic areas in West Orange between Gregory Avenue, Northfield Avenue, and west to the county line with Turtle Bag Zoo. Eastern identified examples of properties that are historically significant and contribute to the overall character of the township. They will do a visual presentation and will take questions from the public. So that's tomorrow, seven o'clock in, in council chambers here. Just briefly, with the hometown banners, I wanna say that of, of the World War II veterans outside, hanging on our honor roll here, there are four sets of father and sons-
Oh, wow.
-that served in World War II. I had previously thought that there was just one set, but I discovered three more sets. And one of those sets is my father and grandfather, who both were West Orange residents. My father was twenty-one, and my grandfather was forty-two. So thank you very much for listening, and I look forward to any questions you might have during, at the end of public comment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Thank you, Jen. It's a beautiful tribute.
Appreciate your passion for this project. It's gonna be beautiful. I saw Ms. Brill getting very teary-eyed. It's, it's gonna have its moment, so. Very proud for our community. Okay, would anyone else like to come to the podium? Ms. Williams? State your name and address.
Tammy Williams, Hillside Avenue. I am coming on behalf of the West Orange Human Relations Commission. So it's amazing, some of the wonderful things that are going around in our community. So the Human Relations Commission is bringing forth a poster contest. And this poster contest is going to highlight the diverse city in our community. So this poster contest is for us to identify the reasons so many people move to our community. We're asking residents to come up and strive to be inclusive of race, class, gender, sexual orientation, family responsibility, familial status, marital status, religious or political affiliation, age, and/or disability. And what we want residents of West Orange is to submit ideas for a lawn sign that will highlight the inclusive nature of our town. Submissions are gonna be due by February twenty-fourth in two thousand and twenty. We have information on our town Facebook page, so look there for more information on dimensions. All submissions are, will be received and judged. So for more information, just go to our HRC Facebook page. There'll be prizes awarded for all entries, and we're really excited about giving this opportunity to all of our West Orange residents. We know that we're a very creative town, and we're really excited about this upcoming project. Again, we want to thank all of our honorees and all of our residents for coming out. Yesterday, we had a wonderful MLK celebration. Thank you to former Council President Guarino for doing the honors in the absence of Council President Michelle Castellino and our mayor, who was unable to participate yesterday. Dr. Stenak gave us some valuable tools to just take away and implement in two thousand and twenty, to continue just making West Orange a wonderful community to, to live in. And the tools were just the ABCs of a, a better tomorrow. And it was to advocate, to be brave, and to have compassion. And we can all take those ideals of Dr. King and, and instill those ideals and, and just lead us into creating a better today for West Orange. And so congratulations to all of our award recipients. Councilwoman Matute Brown, Kabira Myers, William Michael Barbie, as well as to-
Gianna.
Gianna Akiko-
Garcia.
Garcia, thank you. And just all of our entertainers and performances were just fabulous. It's a wonderful day, and we just continue, every year we do this for our township, and we invite our community to come out. All of our programming is, is just superb, and we just wanna continue to highlight the things that we do. Singer line dancing, first Fridays of every month, and then, of course, our meetings. So come to our meetings, they're held right here in Town Hall on the fourth Mondays of every month. We just continue to do things to support diversity in our West Orange community, and we thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Scott, so your hand raised?
Good evening. Brent Scott, seven five Nestor Road. Happy New Year to everyone. I wasn't here for the first meeting of two thousand and twenty, and I just wanna say happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Again, my name is Brent Scott, and I'm here on behalf of the West Orange African Heritage Organization, WOA. WOA was founded in nineteen ninety-nine. It is a five oh one C three organization. And as it was founded in nineteen ninety-nine, that means that WOA is entering in two thousand and twenty, its third decade in West Orange. WOA encourages civic responsibility and performs community service, including providing school supplies to benefit our local students, providing toys for children during Christmas holidays, and food to the West Orange food pantry. The organization also hosts a considerable number of public forums throughout each year. The West Orange African, African Heritage Organization is dedicated to assuring academic and academic achievement for all of our students in West Orange. The organization is widely known for its excellent tutoring program at the elementary school level, and for the Thomas W. Holcomb Scholarship Award for college-bound West Orange students. In order to provide scholarships for West Orange high school students, the West Orange African Heritage Organization hosts an annual denim and diamond scholarship fundraiser every year. In two thousand and twenty, that fundraiser will be held at the Veterans for Foreign Wars, fifty-two West, fifty-two Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland, and the date is Saturday, February eighth, at seven PM. Again, that date is- Again, that date is Saturday, February 8th at 7:00 p.m. at the Veterans for Foreign Wars. That's 52 Eisenhower Parkway in Roslyn. You can get your tickets at www.woa, W-H-O-W-O-H, pardon me, w-o-a-h-o.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Would anyone else like to come address the council this evening? Mrs. Kukrovjak?
Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just had a few comments about the new sound system. I wanna commend Mr. Gross for, I've been asking for this for quite a number of years, and I think it's, the microphones are great, the speakers are great. The only thing that, that we, I request is that you speak into the microphone. They're, they're kind of a strange mic that if you're, if you're right in front of it, it's fabulous. If you're sort of back from it, you can't hear so well. So I just ask, some, some of the council members are speaking into the mic, and I thank you very much, some, and some members of the administration not so much. So if you could just please remember to speak into the mic, we thank you.
Thank you. The real test will be in the summer with the air conditioning, so we hope you're up here and you could still hear everything once the air conditioner goes on. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening? Okay, seeing none. I'd like if my colleagues have any remarks for the public. Councilman Kukrovjak?
I was gonna say that I've been in a town in Pennsylvania that does this, and it's, it's remarkable. I, it's somewhere between here and Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, but I was lost, and I was driving, so I can't remember. Was it, Ms. Silvestri, was it Hamburg, Pennsylvania?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Anyway, it's, it's a, it's a great idea, and I look forward to having that happen.
Great, thank you.
I think that's, I think that's it.
Okay, Councilman Guarino?
No. Sorry.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
You told me I spoke too much. Let's, I'm sorry.
She gave you the- Forget him, a complex tonight.
It never stops me, Councilman, unfortunately.
I mean, thank you, Council President, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilwoman, Councilwoman McQuarney.
Well, I, I agree with my colleague. I, Joe, I look forward to this. I think it's a beautiful tribute. I, I do, along Main Street, and I think Megan's right. I think that, Claire, I think I'm one of those culprits that move to look at my notes. Megan's right, I think it will be more of the banners paying tribute than West Orange Downtown. Tammy, I wanted to just say, Tammy, in the event yesterday, I felt that every speaker's story was inspirational, and you hit the mark on yesterday's event. Brent, I just got my membership for West Orange African Heritage, so check is in the mail. And Claire, we'll, we'll work on speaking directly into the microphone. I will, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Scott, thank you for promoting your organization. Wonderful tutoring program. I remember back in my school board days, instrumental, and, and all the great events that they have for the community, and, you know, raising for scholarships for our high school students as well. So thank you to you and your organization for all your hard work. And Ms. Williams, thank you again for coming down, all that your organization does. And sorry, I felt so bad I couldn't make it yesterday again. And I like the poster idea, I think that's really cool. My one request is, I hope you, I, I think you mentioned political, so I don't, I hope we don't go too towards the political. Okay, no political. Oh, okay, no, okay, good. Okay, good. I, you know, with national politics, the way they, they are these days. Okay, great, good to hear. All right, Madam Clerk, I think, thank you everyone for coming down to speak, and Mr. Fagan for staying here so late this evening.
Thank you, Joe.
And great job. Madam Clerk, we are ready to move forward with the consent agenda.
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January 7th, 2020.
Consent?
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, none. Resolutions, or any resolutions being pulled this evening, Council President?
Okay, so I'll ask my colleagues in a second. I know on C, we'll have questions or discussion for 24-20, resolution authorizing grant application to the Essex County Open Space Trust Fund for the Degnan Park softball field improvement project by the township of West Orange, presented to her, to us by Millennium Strategies, our grant writer, and also Mr. Keough. I gotta give him a plug for working on this. Does anyone want that pull, or you just want discussion? Okay, Councilman Kukrovjak, anybody else?
I'd like it pulled.
Okay, all right, so we'll be discussing that, and then we'll, we'll vote on it. And I know I would want, I would like administration just to, you know, just briefly, 22-20. I'm not sure if my colleagues have any questions on that. Does anyone else have any questions on any of these items? Or does anyone else like anything else pulled this evening? Okay, with that being said, Mr. Gross, just real quick, the resolution authorizing Matrix to utilize supplemental HD-SRF grant funding awarded by the Department Environmental. So this is for a property and the project, Redevelopment Project 18 Central Avenue.
Yeah, this is the next step in the cleanup of, of that area, that entire area down there, you know, in terms of doing the study to see what's contaminated and get, and get a, a action plan put together for us. It's all covered by a grant, there's no out-of-pocket in this particular one for the township, and we highly recommend it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions other than item C? Okay, Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this, on this resolution, because I've, I have also discussed this a little bit at previous, at least one previous meeting, I can't remember whether it was more than one. But this resolution appears to me to be an additional quest for state grant money because a number of, of water monitoring wells were, I don't know, destroyed or damaged beyond repair down there. And I'm trying, I, I'd like to understand how that happened, primarily because we've got a lot of contamination throughout the, the town that we're trying to fix, and if there was something that was done here that we could avoid in the future, or I wanna just make sure that, that that's what happened, or that's what happens.
Yeah, I can't answer that. We'd have to, obviously, I'd talk to Mr. Lepore and find the specifics of how it occurred, if we knew, if we know how it occurred. You know, we're not, we're not active on the site ourselves, so I'll try to find out for you.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, it's about $44,000, but, and I'm just reading, all I know is what was, has been in the resolutions, and it said that when our consultant went to sample the monitoring wells in March 2019, some of the original wells that had been installed way back in 1987 were not accessible because the site was a lay-down yard. Now, I assume that's because we're doing construction over there, and they must have had to put the materials on that property?
I don't know that that necessarily means that, that it occurred since we've been active on the site. What it, what it, you know, going back to 87, if there, you know, there are monitoring wells back then, then there, that does not mean that they were active, being actively monitored. They were just there. And when, and when we, obviously, as part of our plan, now we're going back to those sites, and if they're covered, then they need to be resolved. I, I don't know the, again, I don't know the answer, but I suspect that this is not something that is fresh, but we'll find out.
Okay, yeah, and could you just ask Mr. Lepore if he could come to the next council meeting to just answer questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
I just wanted to follow up on that. I do recall discussing this, whatever the potential cause was it, was of it with Mr. Lepore when he was here the last time we talked about this, because I asked what the, what could have been the possible cause, and I think he said it was a little bit of everything, time, any potential dumping that was going on there. But he did, he did address this at one time. I don't have a question with respect to that, but I do have another question. I don't wanna pull it, I just wanna-
On which item?
On, on item D.
Sure.
Which is 25-20, and it's authorizing execution of limited private community municipal service agreement regarding the snow removal services. Just if, Mr. Gross, can you just, for the public's sake, talk about what that means?
Yeah, any, any private group of property owners who have roads that meet our, our standards are, by law, they're, they deserve the same services that anyone else would get, regardless of whether it's a privately-owned street or not. So this is basically, the law provides that, when requested, that we are required to negotiate an agreement on how and when, and what we're gonna do in terms of providing those services, the frequency, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what this is. This is a part of the municipal requirement that we have to meet, so.
And I just also, just wanna specify that I, in reading the service agreement, it is not a large area that is being cleared. It's, it's actually, and I highlighted it somewhere, I'm probably not gonna find it now, but it's really just the, the front of a couple of houses, and by a couple, I mean four or five houses, actually, which is not a lot of property to cover in and of itself.
Fortunately.
Fortunately.
Fortunately. However, if it were, we'd still be required to do it.
Yes.
And so, it's, you know, it's not, again, this is not something that, we, we don't have to do it until they bring it up to us, but once they bring it up to us, if they have a legitimate claim, then we're required to provide the service.
Okay, thank you.
The call for me, Council President. Okay, thank, thank you, Councilwoman. So we pulled C. Do you want to, Madam Clerk, vote on the rest of the items, then we'll go to C.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The motion is carried.
Okay, so going to item 24-20, authorizing grant application to the Essex County Open Space Trust Fund, which I believe is for about $150,000. So I just wanna give you a little background. I know Councilman Kukrovjak had pulled this. Did you have a chance to speak with Mr. Keough at all prior to this evening?
No.
Okay, so let me just give everyone a little background. I don't know who had spoken with Mr. Keough and who has not. So going back, this is for Degnan Park, the softball field. So, so the, for many years, there's been drainage issues, and this is for, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're saying.
You had a question?
No.
So going back, it has to be like 10 years, there's been major issues with drainage. And I'll let, you know, if administration wants to jump in at all, let me know if I'm misspeaking. But it is the home site of even, we, we share, not that we share services with the school board district, with the school board in regards to, this is the varsity, home varsity field for this girl's softball. For many years, they haven't been able to use it, they have to move over to the lacrosse field, which is turfed. Also, our programs for the township with our, with our feeder program, very limited use at that field. So for many years, this is something that was needing to be done, budget reason couldn't fit in to be done, and now with this grant, it's an opportunity. Mr. Keough had jumped on this immediately, even before last week. I know Councilwoman Matu Brown had, had brought up another area where this money could go to good use. This is something Mr. Keough had worked on with Ms. Capora for a while now, and bringing it to us. Also, the benefit we gain if this project moves forward is that we now have an additional site for our senior programming. As I said, part of the initiative is to, is to expand services at the Toby Katz Civic Center for seniors, and this is for outside activities such as tai chi and some other exercise programming. Once the field is done, the drainage is there, we could also move forward with repairing the pathways because of the water problems. I'm not sure if any of you had walked over in the wintertime over to the Katz Civic Center, but it's just a nightmare accident waiting to happen because the water settles, it drains off that, the way it settles on that field and that area. So this will start some major renovation work that Mr. Keough's been, and he was gonna come this evening, and he, he couldn't get here, so I know a few of you have spoken with him and asked him questions on this. So had I missed anything, Mr. Sayers?
No, not at all. I, I just wanna make one point clear, that this $150,000 is just part and parcel of what it's gonna cost us to do this work. This work is gonna cost a lot more than $150,000, and that's why we are applying this grant to the field and the other issues around the field.
Yes, exactly, and if we-
And it's the girls' softball field.
Yeah, and if we don't get this, receive this grant, we're gonna have to wait and figure out another way to get this done. We have some of these junior softball players in the feeder program had went to the school board. I was at the, one of their last meetings, and they were advocating. Mount Top League has called me advocating through years. I'm not sure if any of you else have received requests, but this is a field that has been major need of repair, and this is a great opportunity for us to be able to afford to get it done. And again, oh, and the other item, too, I just want everybody aware of, so by Mr. Keough shared, a traditional softball field is, the outfield is not as long as it is on the field that's there currently, so he would be able to shorten it up and then expand the community garden over at the Katz Civic Center, because that program is growing tremendously. Unico had funded that program to put in the community gardens next to the field house there, and the senior services started that last, last spring, and it has been taking off. They have a whole program in there where they're going to expand the gardens, take the food to the food pantry, and just, a lot of great things are happening. We're gonna have them come in and present when all this comes to fruition, if it comes to fruition, to let everyone get better detail, and, and now that we have our little picture screen, so we could visualize it. But it is a great project, and I hope everyone could support them moving forward with the grant. So with that, Councilman, I, I know you had items which definitely need to be addressed, and if you'd like to continue with that.
Sure, I had just asked a little bit about this. Just, just for some background, we've been talking about doing this for like a couple of years. And we had actually, I think the council had approved work here at Degnan Field and also at Lafayette Park to do recreation improvements, and I, I think that's, the Rock Spring purchase has sort of interrupted that in, in terms of we were going to do that with some grants. So there was an original plan to make improvements at the softball field, certainly not to this extent. They would, if I recall correctly, it was talking about leveling and also improving the drainage. So I just asked, what were the changes? I don't remember what the project cost was for the first version. Does anybody?
Probably about a quarter million.
About a quarter of a million. This one is, looks like the projection is gonna be for more than double that, it's gonna be about, if I read this correctly-
Just under $500,000?
I'm sorry, $561,000? Is that the projected total cost?
Yeah. Now, that, that was the cost just to do the minimal amount of improvement for programming and things of that nature, but mostly to solve some of the topo issues there that you dealt with.
Grading range.
This is, this is more. The point is, this, this, this has expanded in terms of the scope.
Oh, yes.
It's gonna be turfed also.
There was, I, I think there was a discussion about doing a laser survey of the property, and so we could get better surface drainage, but not putting in the artificial, artificial turf.
Right. Although I think that was something that was contemplated, but it was not put in as part of the project, we were prepared to, to, to move on that at that point in time. We're prepared to, to, to move on that at that point in time.
So, there's also going to be a scoreboard for about thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the, the field improvements, four hundred ninety thousand dollars. And then the design, thirty-five thousand dollars. That's actually to, I guess, hire an architect or an engineer or both.
Sure.
Okay. I, I applaud the project. This is going back a long time when my son was playing baseball locally and I was coaching and it was a tough field to play on. And so, I'm, I sympathize with the girls', uh, softball team playing on the field. And that's not really my issue. My issue is that we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, uh, is coming from the county. And there has been, as far as I know, no notice to the council about this grant, no notice to the open space and recreation committee and, uh, no consideration for what perhaps the open space and recreation committee, uh, might have suggested as alternatives to perhaps not spending all a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this project. And I'm trying to find out, you know, wh- why that was, that we got this notice of a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. And just to be clear, and I think, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Matu Brown has pointed this out before, every penny that we're getting here is a return of tax money that the property owners pay to the county open space fund. So, it's a return of our, of our taxes. But I, um, I recall the last time, the last two times that the county has done this and, but I can't remember when the council or the open space committee got notice of it. But I want to try to find out why it was, as far as I know, the council wasn't notified about this. I learned of it at the January seventh council meeting, uh, when, uh, Mr. Pagliisi, the representative from the county, came up and told us about this. So, I, I tried to run down of, 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 of this and I haven't gotten any details, but I would, I would really like to understand better, uh, why it is that when we get a hundred fifty thousand dollar open space grant from the county, that the town's open space and recreation committee, uh, doesn't know about it. And, uh, is not asked to contribute and is not asked for their suggestions, which is the primary reason why it exists. So, anybody can.
And that's fair. That's a fair question that I, Mr. Sayers, if you could find out for Councilmen, cause, yeah, I, I know my experience with the grant writer, uh, these, they come, they pop out these grants and the timeframe is very short on, on them. And I, I know this, the one we just did for the seniors and we had like four weeks to put it together. Sometimes that happens. I'm not sure if that's the case with this scenario. But, Mr., you know, I could, you know, I, I don't know what your process is when she has a grant of this magnitude.
She didn't, she didn't get, this grant came to the township. It comes from, it comes, it came to, from a letter, it came from the county executive. And I, Susan, the, the original project that you and I had spoken about, how did the, didn't the open space committee be, wasn't the open space committee part of that project?
I thought that, so, I think the same thing happened to the open space that happened to me when I caught, when I saw the grant. I was asking for the environmental commission. I wrote this in an email. And it was already basically claimed by the mayor and the recreation department. So, that's why I think that the open space commission didn't pick it up because it was all, when it came in from the county, um, that's what we were told, that that was the project.
Right.
So, it didn't really come for approval because we have been talking about this particular project for a very long time.
Very long time.
But I do want to just add though, that when a grant does come in, I think we do need to figure out some kind of format about who sees it, when you see it, um, if everyone sees it and then we come back to discuss it, um, you know? I think that's important too.
Councilwoman Matu Brown, you had a question?
Not a question, just a comment that, um, I did get in a, and I am on the county, um, website, on the email distribution list and an email did go out from the county on November fourth. So, I, I knew about it then and I had questions, um, to Mr. Pagliisi with respect to, um, what it would, it could be used for. Obviously, I was looking to use it to preserve some open space. But this email that I'm looking at came out November fourth. So, and this is because I subscribe to their.
Sure.
To, but I agree that we should have some, some form of, you know, communication with respect to, um.
Well, I know with grants, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no. But that, I just wanted to say that they do send out a notice, just how our process is maybe needs to be streamlined.
I, I know with grants, the mayor has final approval because, um, he had issued, we all received an email not too long ago, a month or so ago, in regards to the, um, the dollar amount on grants. So, if any of us are aware of a grant, uh, we're working with one of our liaison appointments, um, commissions to, um, you know, has to go through Mr. Sayers. So, anytime we do have any, uh, we do see a grant, uh, please, I know, forward it to Mr. Sayers so he could, um, bring it to the mayor to see if the administration, uh, is interested because as far as resources go, uh, with staff time, it's going to be contingent upon the amount of the grant and the time constraint of the, of the township employees because they have to put a lot of time into the grant proposals themselves. I want to stick on the topic of this particular grant. Obviously, I mean, from what I'm picking up from Mr. Sayers is the mayor saw it and Mr. Keo saw it and they decided to jump on it for this particular project.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. It didn't come from our grant writer. It came from the county in a letter, as, as, uh, Councilwoman Matu Brown said. It came to us in a letter. And when it came, we were basically talking about how, what we would do and we had all talked about doing that, the, uh, the, um, the, uh, the project in the spring for the field. And we figured this would be a perfect opportunity to get an extra hundred fifty thousand dollars for that project, which is what we did.
And I know that, correct me if I'm wrong, the grant writer time to time's come to, I think she was just there with the, the new grant writer, uh, at your staff meetings as well.
Correct.
So, that could have been probably a venue where they had a conversation. I say the grant writer because her name's listed here in the.
No, no. What happened was, once we got the grant from the county, then we brought the grant writer in and said, hey, you know, this is the grant for the county, just make sure we apply for this and this is what we want to apply for. And that's what they put together for us.
So, so, so at this point in time with this, I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Councilman, I see you raising your hand there. Don't want to miss you and not let you speak. Did you have a comment about this grant?
I have a, no. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
I won't talk, I won't take long. I just had a question. I, I, I think, first of all, this is a program that's long been waiting. The girls' softball team has always been the, the orphans and basically using the lacrosse field for their sport. I think it's a great thing aesthetically and, you know, it's a good, it's a good, good, good way, a good use of money. My one question is, is though, of course, the project's going to cost more than a hundred and fifty thousand. I was wondering, since this is being used for the Board of Education, will the Board of Education be putting anything towards this grant?
So, I.
To the cost of the project?
I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Alpert and, uh, well, actually, he's supposed to get back to me with dates and the superintendent and to discuss this.
Okay.
You know, I, I believe the, the last project we funded was the, the football field. And so, that will be discussion and administration has to have that conversation with the superintendent. So, I guess they'll get back to us on that.
And the other part to that, Council President, is that will township rec programs be able to have access to this field?
Yes. And that's the whole reason why we want to move forward with this because it will be turfed.
Okay.
For most of you following the baseball season in the past five years, it's been horrible weather. Students have been, uh, you know, our springs have been very rainy, a lot of snow left in March. It tends to snow now more in March than other, other months. And so, we, you know, the, the students and, uh, have to play the dr, uh, the fields drain quickly with the turf. And, and it's less maintenance on our public works department.
Correct. And, and the reason for my question, Council President, is that there's, in all the years that I've always approved of the projects like soccer field, football field, is that, you know, between Mountaintop and Powell, they've had, you know, unlimited access to those facilities. And I just want to see that going because, since it's a bit poor township money, it, you know, and the Board of Ed has always been accommodating. I just want to make sure this will be with this project as well.
Absolutely. And, and also, as I said, our seniors, uh, our senior services department's looking to utilize this space as well.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Council, Councilman Kukoviac?
Yeah. Again, I don't want to question the importance of it or the necessity of it. It's, there's been a necessity for a long time. But one of the things that I see my job up here is, is to, is a balancing act, to balance the request for resources and spending, uh, and compare what should be done or what needs to be done. And you may recall, the last time we got a grant from this, we spent it all, I think it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars on, uh.
Splash pad.
The splash pad at the town pool. And my argument was, we should consider renovating all of the fields in town because, uh, at the time, I had a son who was playing all kinds of sports and we were going to all these fields and they were just in terrible shape. And I just thought we would be able to benefit a lot more people by renovating all the soccer and the, and the baseball fields. So, I, obviously, I lost that, that argument. But that's the sort of thing where if we know about the grant, then, uh, we can discuss and debate. This, I, I hesitate to call it a unique grant, but most of the grant opportunities, uh, we have here, uh, have more specific requirements that would qualify for the grant. They, they, the, the grantors want specific acts, specific, uh, activities, specific things done for the, for the money. In this case, as far as I know, and I still don't have the application, uh, so I don't know what the specific requirements are, but it was basically, you have a hundred fifty thousand dollars for whatever project you have that's, uh, in process or, or available to move on right now because you've got to spend it in like a year. So, uh, as Councilwoman Matu Brown said, uh, she found out about it in November. I think that's when, uh, Councilwoman McCartney found out about it because, um, this was something that was going on when I got on the council, which is that, uh, Councilwoman McCartney is heavily involved with the grants and it seems to be working out well, uh, except there seems to be a glitch here. So, I just want to, uh, make sure that if the council considers this to be a problem, and I, I certainly consider it to be a problem, one of not knowing when these grants come in, both from the council perspective and for, for an open space grant, uh, let the open space and recreation committee here should know about it. So, I, I want, uh, before, if, if the rest of the council wants to join me in expressing itself or that, that we need to know that when there are certain, uh, we, meaning the council, need to know when there are certain grants. And I don't know what the qualification would be for that, but so that, so that we can know about these things. Uh, I, I understand the administration would, would, in this case, wants to make that decision and keep it to itself, but we are, you know, the, uh, the sometimes forgotten, uh, part of our local government. And I, I just want to, uh, reiterate that this is simply just letting us know what's going on so that we can participate, uh, in the process.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilman. I, I, I know, um, obviously, Mr. Keo is in tune to these because this is the second time he, he jumped on it. And kudos, I mean, that's part of his job too, how to get our parks and recreations done in a, in a, uh, affordable way. So, I appreciate him for working quickly with the grant writer, although it would have been nice to have some input. So, uh, Mr. Sayers, um, maybe you could have a, you know, when these grants come forward. And also too, anytime the open space commission, if they're thinking of different ideas, if you ever want, um, I think we've got an email, if not, I'll get, give you the information of the grant writer, that if you want to pick, call her and pick her brain, she's very good of just letting her know the kind of projects you're working on. And then she'll send you information when she gets them because a lot of these times they just pop out off the, uh, you know, the internet that they get and they have to work on them fast. And like I said, some are worth doing, but whichever ones, my colleagues, so they all, everyone understands, is that everything has to go through administration because, again, the mayor has to be the one, he has administrative detail, not us. And he has to determine if the grant is worth the, the, uh, the, the award with the work that's put in. And sometimes there are also, uh, grants that you have to make a match as well. But point taken. And, Mr. Sayers, if we could work more, uh, fluently, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve twenty-four dash twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castelino?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, if I could just, um, just to clarify, um, that this is for open space and parks and recreations, but also, um, for historic preservation as well. So, it's, the, the, the grant does cover.
Okay.
The grant does cover historic preservation, open space acquisition and parks and recreation. That was, uh, what I had asked, um, Mr. Pagliisi to clarify in November.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman. Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, ordinance on first reading?
Yes. Twenty-five ninety-seven dash twenty, an ordinance releasing, extinguishing and vacating in the rights of the township in sewer easement located on Lot seven, Block one, in the township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
I'll get used to this eventually. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castelino?
Yes.
I, I can't, I can't have the council president come sit back over here.
Okay.
Probably be December by the time I get it straight.
Any discussion on, any of my colleagues on this? I know it.
I, I guess it's really for the administration. This seems to be that at the base of, uh, on South Valley Road, i- if it's the same thing where we had residents here complaining about, um, water settling at the bottom and then there was a smell that couldn't be detected, is, is this the same sewer problem there that I know Lenny was so involved with for a number of months?
I'm not sure exactly what areas it's going to cover, but I would think it would, it would be able to cover that area.
Right. Cause I, I don't know how that was ever resolved. Do you remember that? I'll talk to Lenny.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk? Oh, no, we already voted.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Okay. Just real quick, I'm not sure what my colleagues, no one had called me, uh, if you have anything for this evening, but just getting ready, I know Councilwoman Matu Brown had sent something in about, uh, budget dates. I know, Mr. Gross, that's, I'm not sure if you're ready to, to schedule anything yet. I know we're far from that.
I had a conversation with her before the meeting.
Okay.
I started the framework of it, but I don't have it tonight. I might have done. We're, we're just finishing up end of year, so.
And with myself not feeling well last, this past week, I didn't get a chance to follow up with you in regards, if you're prepared yet tonight. I don't see Mr. Lapore here to give us an update on the firehouses. But I think it would be, um, beneficial for the council and, um, to some of the points raised this evening by my colleagues, if we just get an update on the capital improvements from this past year before we move forward to next year's budget. Cause it'd be great to get a handle on the monies that were approved this past year and what projects have been done. And I know with last year's budget, we had a large capital, um, strategically, we went with a larger capital fund, uh, which will help enable us to get this softball field done. And I just want to make sure that, um, just to get a handle, a visual on where we're at with the projects and.
And for the most part, I mean, we're moving forward with them, but, you know, we've only had a few months really, um, in order to, to, to work on. Cause, you know, we, we adopted in June, July, June, July, money really didn't come available till August and September. So, there really hasn't been a lot of time to get a handle on a lot of those projects.
Well.
To be hon, to be honest with you, I mean, because you can't, you know, we're, we're moving forward on them, but there's preliminary work that needs to be done. So, not, certainly very few of them have come to conclusion.
Just so you know, I did get a memo from Mr. Lapore this afternoon about the firehouses, if you want, if you want me to read it to you.
Sure.
It's short. It just says, he's issuing RFPs for new roofs at fire headquarters, fire station number one on Valley Road, and fire station number two on Washington Street. The RFP will also include new roofs for the municipal building. At the same time, the RFP will be issued for interior and exterior improvements to fire station number one. That, this includes the dormitory and firefighter bathrooms at fire station number one. A separate RFP will be issued for exterior and interior improvements to firehouse number three and number four. These two will also include bathrooms. So, he's putting those RFPs out right now.
And then, and then, the plan is this spring to start the work on them?
Yes. Once, well, once we get the RFPs back, depending upon, you know, what they are and how much they cost, then we're going to move ahead with, with
If you could please forward us that email.
Sure.
I know, I can't, I can't write this evening, I'm having trouble.
I'll, I'll forward it to you tomorrow.
What we're doing is in anticipate, going ahead and do the design work, and anticipation, because we're going to be proposing additional funds this year, as we had promised we would. And therefore, if, if that's approved and we can get it done on a timely basis, we'll be prepared to go out for a larger, larger sized projects, as opposed to doing them all in, you know, one after another in, in the year.
Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. You know what I'd also really like, there's two things I'd really like, is one, we do need an org chart by department. We need an organizational chart by department.
Yeah, we asked for that.
That, that we need to have. It, it makes it, it simplifies, it understands, it spreads out every department and all its, you know, instead of looking just at a list of names and titles, it would be great to do an org chart. It would help my colleagues and I to understand the budget and, and the display and the dispersion for personnel. My second thing is, is what I've always done is that, you need to do an expense commentary. I may be asking a lot, but at budget time and when we go through our meetings, if you could highlight by department, specific significant overages or underages in the budget and the expenditures, it would make our lives a lot easier when we're looking at it. Instead of asking a hundred different questions, looking at one line, this line, this line, if you pinpoint it specifically in the department, say, police or fire or public works, you spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in payroll or in supplies because, these are significant things. This is what we do on a state level, and this is things that we did on, on, when I was in corporate, that during a budget time, if you do a summary, an expense summary commentary, it makes our evaluation, and if we get it, not the day of our meeting, but weeks, so my colleagues and I have a chance to digest it and look at it, that would be significantly helpful.
We, we, we'll, we'll, we'll look at expanding that. We actually do do that for you in terms of, a, any changes, man, if, anything that's different from the previous year, we highlight that, highlight that well and give, and give you some explanation. We, we'll look at expand, whether we can expand that explanation.
And I, I, if I may, Council, oh, Council President, just one more second, I promise, is that, I understand, because that's when you have the arrows, the green and the red, but
And there's a, there's a, there's a column there that talks about, talks about what it, you know
What it is.
What it is, but we can, we can, we can look at it and see if we can expand that.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the, the memo, because I think that would be very helpful to us, but it, it seems to me that we have been talking about renovations to the firehouses for multiple years. And it seems that we should be able to find out what's, what the status is of all the different work that we're, we're doing.
Of course. I wasn't suggesting we couldn't tell you where we stand, but the question was, in reference to the two thousand nineteen capital, what is explained is, we've only had really a few months really to work on that, so there's not, we can't tell you, we, we haven't finished a lot of those projects yet, because the nature of capital is, it does not live within the, the, the budget year. The projects often take three to six months on their own or more, depending on what it is. So, that's all I was commenting. I certainly was not suggesting that we can't give you an update of where we are. That's what we just received, is an update of, of, from, from Mr. Lapore, in terms of where we are, in terms of doing the plans and specs to move forward with it. So, we certainly can give you update on it.
Okay. Because I think
That was not, if I, if I, if I came across that way, I apologize. That, that was not my intention.
Great. Glad we clarified it.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you. I, I think if we all looked, and I, and I brought this up last year, and I know it was very eager and very aggressive at the time, because you were, a lot of things were going on, the Rock Spring purchase, in the middle of budget season, and, and obviously, I understood that asking for this plan for a budget, it was difficult then. But I do want to call everyone's attention to the New Jersey League of Municipalities magazine. This is the exact plan that I talked about last year. Warton Township does two things. They do a capital improvement budget and a capital improvement plan, which is, I think, what we're all talking about here. And if we can just, again, not throwing this all on your lap and saying, you know, get this done before budget season, but just thinking with that lens, moving forward, that if we create a capital improvement plan, when it comes time for budget season, for all of us, it would be more beneficial to understand what, what the expenses are, what was expended, but still needs to be expended, understanding that every year, there are things that are going to come up, right, from every department. I personally have reached out to Chief Abbott and to Chief Ekio to take a tour and, and meet with them in advance. And, and probably that, that's really what, what, what the precipice of my email was, asking for a budget calendar, so that I can, can, can calendar in every other department I would like to speak to, because quite frankly, and again, last year was a learning experience. When I went to the jitney, the mayor's jitney town hall, and I'm listening to all of the, the residents, you know, upset, rightfully so. Everybody has jobs to get to, and we don't have time for excuses, and at least our bosses don't. But I'm going to be very honest, I sat there and I wanted to kick myself in the rear, because I, I did not vote to, the, for the request for the department head, when she said, we need to hire someone who's full-time, not having that full understanding. So, I'm doing the proactive thing for myself, because I'm new, I'm going to sit down with every department head and understand before we come to budget season. So, that was the precipice of my asking for that calendar, so I know how much time I have, because obviously, I'm going to be taking my personal time off of work, which is fine. But I do want to look out at that lens, and, and if you all have your magazines, if you can read that article, it's a really good article, because it's the distinction between a, a capital budget and a capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you. And to that point, I know with the legal municipality classes we all have taken, they've gone over that schedule, and in years past, we've all have gone to that schedule with Mr. Gross. I, I guess, just talking to my colleagues, I'll get to you, one second, Councilman. Just talking with my colleagues offline, in, in between meetings, you know, the concern here, Mr. Sayers, is obviously, we, and Mr. Gross, we approved a large capital budget last year, and which we fully, you know, which we supported, and, and we, and we told you, we, and we were quite honest, we would, you know, be very thoughtful with the projects that we would approve this year. So, that being said, we, we definitely want to keep track of all these capital improvements. I always like, I know this year, we had a really great thoughtful presentation with the budget, as we've been doing years past, when I was in school board land, and they still do it now, is we always put pictures, and we have this big, beautiful screen now, of some of the capital projects that have gone completed. And one other project that I need an update for next, next week as well, is the special needs playground, that I thought was going to be installed, and that's another perfect example. We proved, proved the monies, we thought it was going to get installed in the fall. Because I keep in constant contact with Mr. Keo, I understand why, but again, for, you know, for all of us up here, and, and for those conversations, and for the public's concern, especially the advocates that supported the site, it's really important to get, you know, we have a lot of facilities now, especially, I know, I'm nervous that we, now we have Rock Spring, we will have, be taking title to Ten Roney, and so, we have a lot of projects. And as far as the organizational chart, as Councilman Guarino had, had stated, we had asked last budget season for that organizational chart, with the traditional pictures of the graph, that goes to everybody. It's just a great picture for us to understand, especially with these facilities, who reports to who, like Ten Roney Circle, who's going to be, I know we're not there yet, but just perfect example, who's going to be the site manager for that facility? If a lightbulb, if the tenant on the third floor is, needs electrical plant, panel issue, you know, I hope he's not knocking on Mr. Cubey's door to get a fix, you know, who would be, you know, in, in charge of that. So, those kind of, you know, details, we, we will need. I'm sure you're working on them, but if we could have them by budget season, that'd be great. Councilman Kukoviac, if you'd like to add anything else?
Yes, just a few additional thoughts. My memory is, the first thing you asked for when you joined the council was an org chart.
Yeah.
We've been asking for it, I think, even before then, and I don't believe we have ever gotten one. And
This is the year, right, gentlemen?
Well, well, I just, I just want to make a point, that the budget is one of our most responsible and powerful functions that we provide here. And we can insist that we get the tools that we need to make the decisions. And if we don't, we just, like you were saying, we just don't do the projects. And I think we need to start thinking about that now, because that's not something that's ever been done since, in the ten years I've been on the council. But we just, we just need to reiterate how important we think this is. I, I, we've been talking about the firehouses for a long time, and if we say that they're important, and we ask the, the administration to provide us the tools that we need to evaluate, we need to hold them accountable for what we need to do. And I, I can't tell you how thrilled I am to hear our, all of us, talking about what we need to do our job better. So, congrats.
And, and with that being said, I, you know, as far as administration, I, you know, we have to be thoughtful too, when, as Ms. Councilwoman just made a point, when the directors come to us budget season, and they request for additional support in their departments, we need to be mindful of their requests as well. Because I just don't think they're coming here just, you know, for the heck of it. I think when they ask, they know they, they're, they're, they're in need. And so, some of the reasons why I know we don't always receive everything we request, because there's only so many hours in a day, and so many employees on staff. So, with that being said, as, as much, you know, I, you know, we, I know in, in, in your thoughts, we get that chart in the budget hearing, but as we've said over and over again, we need it in the other format. So, again, if you can reply to our requests, that would be great. With that being said, does anybody else have anything quick for, only because I'm really hurting, but go ahead, Councilman.
Okay. We needed to find quick, because, yeah, because there's pain involved. I think I'm being quick, but I don't think anybody else is. I just have three follow-up questions for
Okay.
Councilwoman Matu Brown, about OSPAC.
Oh, that's right, I apologize.
No problem. I, I wanted to, if I could, find out who the members of the board are now. And you were mentioning some names, I'm not sure, clear whether they're members or who they are and
Say yes, we're, we're still waiting for an appointment, and I was going to speak with Susan McCartney. We need an appointment from the Arts Council
Okay.
As a liaison. So, according to the resolution that we, I mean, the ordinance that we passed, there is someone from, should be from the Arts Council, a member from the council, which is myself, someone who is selected by the mayor, which is Shari.
Uh, Ms. Quirk?
Ms. Quirk. She has had experience with OSPAC in the past, that was the mayor's appointment, Bill Keogh, from the Recreation Department, and still waiting for, and we, we will have this before, hopefully, week's end, or before the next town council meeting, an appointment for, from the Arts Council. And I'm so sorry to get, Lou, remind me
Mr. Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Reynolds, from Department of Public Works.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you say when the next meeting, when the next OSPAC board
No. So, one of the things that they were also discussing, and they have to come together to, and agree, I think they're going to meet once every three or four months, they're going to get a schedule together. That's also one of the to-do lists that they are, are working on.
I think that might turn into a bit of a problem, in terms of evaluating the, the proposed projects.
So, because I don't know about programming, I'm going to leave that to them, to figure out first their programming, and what, what timeframe they think they're going to need to complete that programming. And we said we'd circle back within the next couple of months to meet again, to discuss that. I mean, I want to give them time, I mean, obviously, they have full-time jobs as well, and they're volunteering on this, but give them time to create bylaws, and in those bylaws, all of these things should be spelled out, will be spelled out. So, it is something that we were discussing, and it, it doesn't, there's not a lot happening in these, in these months, to meet monthly. So, they're trying to figure out as a board, how they're going to, how often they need to meet.
Okay. And just the last question is about minutes. I, I, I'm very interested in finding out the, the minutes of the board meetings. I, I realize you had just had a meeting last week, and you haven't
So, 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 we were looking at, with respect to keeping minutes, and we did not see that here, as a liaison, as every other liaison to the council. A report is what we all do. So, I know that the financials is something that the board has to, and looking over the purpose of, of, of the board itself, let me go back to it.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, I, I think that was our oversight, because I know PRC, we keep minutes, I believe.
Okay. And, and again, this is
HRC keeps minutes.
This is something that they, both these ordinances, the one that with the rental fees, and the one that we passed, they were going to scrutinize, and just come back, not piecemeal, but to come back and say, these are the things we think we need to change. What I understood when we, when we discussed this at, at the meeting, there was nowhere in here indicated of minutes. Now, if that needs to change, then it, you know, would be something that we would vote on.
Okay.
If I could, Council President, is that okay?
Yeah, no, I think we should incorporate minutes in the ordinance, because the other, the other commissions have, have to, and they're, and they're very, you know, time you started, who attended the meet, they have to take attendance at the meetings.
I just wanted to clarify that, that's why we didn't do it, because it wasn't in there.
Yeah, it was an oversight. No, absolutely, it was, you know, my mistake too, I missed it, so I apologize.
If, if I could, I don't know whether Mr. Casey remembers this, but prior to you joining the council, there was the township making a settlement with the New Jersey chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union, over a brouhaha with the open space and recreation committee. Do you, okay. And one of the things we agreed was that all of the commissions and committees in the town were going to operate as, as if they all had to take minutes and provide them publicly.
Yeah.
So, I don't know whether we're still under that, the terms of that agreement, but
That particular agreement, I don't remember it applying to all commissions, agencies, whatever. Certainly applied to the open space committee, because that was the committee that was involved at the time.
Hunting, yeah.
It's not a bad idea to have minutes for any and every organization, and the settlement in that, in the, with respect to the open space committee, was that despite the fact that we didn't feel that the Open Public Meetings Act actually applied to that committee, because it's strictly a recommended, recommending body, that we would comply with the opens, Open Public Meetings Act anyway. And that, that's not a bad idea with every organization.
Right. And my memory was that we agreed to do it for all of the committees and
It's possible, I don't, I just don't
Yeah.
I mean, I, if, it may be an issue that we want to clarify, is that something that you can dig up and, and find?
I mean, I can find it, but I, but I'm not sure, if everybody wants to do it anyway, I'm not sure
Okay.
It's really, it's not something we're going to fight about, so
Yeah.
Okay, good. No, that's fine, as long as we're agreed on.
I, I just wanted to be clear that that's why we didn't take minutes, because I didn't see that we had to.
Yeah, yeah, no. And, and you know what, Ms., Madam Clerk? Yes. Maybe you could, remember, you had given a seminar to all the commissions a few years ago, with some information? Do you still have that? Do you still have that information? Like, I know you, you had all the commissioners come in, it was a while ago, it was a while ago.
It was with Richard Trank.
Not really. You do not recall? You don't recall that? No, I do not. Okay. Just, just a maybe, okay, the maybe How long ago was it? Like, four, three, four, when I first came on the council, so, it's almost four years now. It was held in I kind of do remember. It was here, it was right in this room, yeah. I mean, I sent out an email today to all the chair people to, that I need minutes. Because there's very few people that give me minutes. Okay. I know we, I know the PRC does them, I see them, I hope they're forwarding them to you. No. Okay. I'll make sure.
Is the open space and the historic preservation?
Open space, yes, historic, yes, they're very, they're pretty good. Planning, zoning are excellent. Yeah. You went over the Sunshine Act, that was the whole point of the meeting. I do, I do, yeah, yeah.
I think the, the key to making good minute, you have to have somebody who's dedicated to doing it.
Yeah.
And it's got to be one person, they've got to be there and do it every time. And if they can follow a formula, you know, it makes it pretty easy. But it's a matter of discipline more than anything else.
Designating a secretary, designating a secretary basically for the commission.
They were going to, when they do their bylaws, then designate officers for the board.
All right, Councilwoman, thank, thank you. And if, and then, and then you had already confirmed, or you will confirm, next meeting for Camille to come in?
No, we, we did confirm.
Okay, you have her on the schedule, okay, beautiful, okay, great.
I have a question for Joe, because he keeps bringing up the programming. I just, I'm curious, when you say you're bringing up the programming, to the extent, are you expecting that we are? I'm, you know, when I think of Camille, she is a lifelong resident. She knows we have 11 schools, she knows all of the program is basically family oriented. And it looks like, it sounds like you're looking for, we are going to approve her programming, or we are going to look at her rental venue? I'm not sure what you mean by.
I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm just suggesting that we follow the wording of the ordinance.
Okay.
And it's, I know it's been a while since we approved the, the ordinance, I think it was last May or June. But originally, the draft ordinance said that this committee, this board that we were assembling, was going to have review and approval on everything, on all programming.
Okay.
So it was modified after a discussion, and now it's recommend, now the, the charge is to recommend on the programming. All I'm really doing is just saying we should follow the, the ordinance. And that's, that's what the ordinance says, is that the, the OSPEC board has to review all programming and make recommendations, and it specifically names the council, and also, I think, the business administrator, for all programming. And it also has two dates in there of when to review the finances. And my vague memory, and the Councilwoman Matu Brown brought this up, my vague memory was that we wanted to get a, get a picture of the finances as the season was progressing. And then there was an assumption that the season would be over by October 1st, and that would be when we would be presented with the financials. That's just.
No, I, I, I thought it was what we gave them to, because usually, they may be done with the season, but, you know, they have to the end of the year to do a, a report. And I think it was March 1st, I think, what, what date did we put in there?
No, I just lost it. Hold on a second, let me just scroll down.
I think it's important, and you bring up the point with the programming. What's good about this committee now, Mr. Keo's on it, because sometimes events, you know, they're putting on a, an event, and not so much that it's not programming, we wouldn't approve, but the date may overlap with something the Recreation Department's doing. You want to, you want to get the most, the better, greater attendance at these events. So everyone has to coordinate, because there's only, you know, so many, so, so many people in the, in the township to attend. So you want to get your attendance, you want to maximize your attendance, is the words I'm looking at.
Council President, if I just could, just so that, when the public is reviewing this video, I, I'm just going to read the purpose of the ordinance.
Sure.
For clarity and clarification. The purpose of the, of the board of the OSPEC Schindler Performing Arts Center is to provide review and oversight to the operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center to ensure that the programming used in operation of the Oscar Schindler, Schindler Performing Arts Center is consistent with the interest and values of the members of this community, and that any funds generated from the use and operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center are dedicated for continued operation and improvement, whether through a licensing agreement, sub-licensing agreement, or otherwise. In addition, the board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center shall serve in an advisory capacity to the mayor, the Department of Recreation, and the Township Council as to the approval of programming at the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. The board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center shall also provide support in fundraising for the continued operation and improvement of the Performing Arts Centers and its facilities. With respect to the financials, member duties, item C, the review of the financial records of funds related to programming at the, and operation at the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center, which shall occur at least on two occasions. The first, no later than July 1st of each year, the second, no later than October 1st of each year. However, the board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center shall have the authority to review the financial records at any time. And what I, what I said earlier about changing the dates, it came up because of what they thought was better for programming for them. And if you look at the financials, and I know it's getting late, I'm so sorry. But if you look at the financials, the number of programs that they had in the short amount of time that their season existed, it was a lot for them. This was their first year, you know, moving forward, I'm sure as they go along, they'll iron out kinks, but I think a projection of what their budget will look like, because they'll have programming in advance, and then closing out would be a good space for them to, to start.
Well, we look forward to the presentation at the next meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, for my colleagues, I have a motion to close the meeting.
To move some.
Okay. All in favor, is that a good? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much, West Orange, and we'll see you next month on Tuesday night, February 4th. Good night, everyone.